2018, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Planning Board members present tonight is alternate Sean Winston, regular member David Dow, Niall Shore. Absent tonight is the Vice Chair Paul Bovere, President Nicole Fecto, regular member, and Mike LaRue, the alternate. Whose turn is it to be a voting member this evening?
I think it's Sean's turn.
Sean, so...
That, I would say, if we're going to be voting on item number three.
Mm-hmm.
I've had some discussions with Mr. Bodwell about doing some salvage from the barn. So...
Oh, forget it.
Well, that's not even going to be an issue then.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
I'd probably won't be voting on that one.
(laughing).
Can you say something about Judy Burgess' husband?
I did.
Could you say something here tonight?
I will, yeah.
Can you say something here tonight about Judy Burgess?
No, no. Okay, so, we have a full board tonight. The Vice Chair Paul Bovere is here. Moving on, let's like to say something about the passing of a member, a citizen of Berwick, a lifelong citizen of Berwick.
Yeah, that's, and I just heard about it, I just heard about it today, but Judy Burgess, her husband, who actually built this room, it's called the Burgess Room, after him, passed away, and I don't know any details about it. But Judy worked for the town for probably 25 to 30 years, and she kept the planning board working as a secretary before she became a member for a long time. And, I mean, this is, Mr. Burgess was a big Berwick promoter, and I think people are going to really miss him.
Mm-hmm.
And that's about all I know about it right now, but I'd like to offer Judy my condolences.
Yeah, same here.
And the planning board.
And the family also, the grandson...
Yeah.
...built the trail to Penny Pond.
That's correct. Yeah, Judy and, together as a family, Ashley, they all worked on it together, but three generations, they put the Penny Pond Trail between the library and Dobson.
And his grandson wanted to name him after him, but he refused, and he wanted it named after veterans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just great people. So...
Thank you, Paul. Moving on to the public comment session. Public comment session is open to any resident of Berwick, any property owner of Berwick, to talk about anything that relates to the planning board. We do have a number of things on the agenda tonight, so this is your opportunity to come forward, and if you'd like to talk about any of the applications that are before us, or anything else that relates to the planning board, please feel free to come forward and just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Socia. My address is 85 School Street. And I'm here to request, well, I have three questions I want to ask. One is, I want to get a permit to raise a fence higher than six feet, because I bought the property of the new trailer park that was put in by Dana Hall and Paul Kennedy. And I don't want to see it from my backyard, so I would like a permit to raise about a nine-foot fence, so I can't see it from my back porch. All right? There's a buffer, if it's considered a trailer park, does he need to put a buffer in so that we can't see it at all? Anybody from the street to block that? If it's considered a trailer park?
I'm not sure. We'd have to look into that.
Will you please?
Sure.
I'm with him. I've got some mobile park regulations on your zoning, and it does require buffering. And if you need pictures, I have pictures of the property as well.
And I'd also like to know, there was a strip of land, it was a right-of-way, all right, between me and the trailer that's there now, that somebody's living in. Who owned that? Was that prop, town property? Or did Dana and Paul own that piece of land?
No, it's not, you're not talking about this, that's not, that's not the CMP right-of-way, right? That's a different right-of-way?
I'm not sure. I mean, when I bought that piece of land...
The town doesn't own a right-of-way over there.
It said town property.
Yeah, the town doesn't own a right-of-way over there. I had some questions about the, that, as well.
Me too, actually.
Because I noticed it. Can we bring this up in new business?
Yep.
So, let's add this to new business, because I had some questions about that, because that, that trailer park did not have to come before the planning board, so I have some questions about it as well.
And erosion as well.
Oh, yeah. And I put the fence up when the land was level, all right, between me and the new road that's there. And he dug down like three feet. So, all the integrity of my support to that fence is now gone, and it's going to end up falling over.
Okay.
And he needs to put something up so that that fence doesn't fall over.
Okay. Have you spoken with the Code Enforcement Officer?
About that?
The town Code Enforcement Officer?
I emailed them, yes.
You have? Have you gotten a response?
We have manager and Danny on Wednesday, Tuesday.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've been very actively...
Okay.
All right, and also, one more thing, well, I have a bunch of things, but I won't keep you time, because you're going to save it for later. All right? There's a tree right on the corner, it's a big maple tree, all right? He cut all the roots on that tree. Now, if that gets blown over by a northwest wind, who's responsible for all the damage that that's going to cause, for the power lines and the road? I don't want to be. He...
Who's...
It's my tree.
It's your tree?
Yeah, but he took all the roots that support that tree. He took them right out when he put that road in.
Hmm.
So, I mean, and I want that tree, so...
Sure. I'm not, I'm not sure of the answer of that, but, let's talk about this in new business, if you don't mind sticking around.
Okay.
I'm glad you have a meeting with the town on Wednesday, so...
So, when do I come back to, you know, to find out information about this?
We're going to get to new business tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, after, it's going to be in the agenda.
All right.
The public comment sessions open, continue to be open. Feel free to come forward. Seeing nobody come forward, I'd like to close the public comment session. There was just a couple additions or amendments to the, to the agenda that I wanted to make. Under Land Use Ordinance Amendments, which would, we're going to strike number five, Begin Review of Shals and Musts in Section 6.4. And in that place, we're just going to have a general discussion about that recreational marijuana ordinance that James sent us this week. And then after old business, we wanted to, I was going to put in new business, there was an issue that Nicole wanted to talk about. So, does anybody have any issues with that? Okay. Moving on to the approval of minutes for the May 17th, 2018 meeting. What do you got?
No changes.
No changes? Anybody? Approval, so the motion will be for approval of the minutes as is?
I move that we approve of the minutes as is.
Make a motion and a second?
Well, I'll second that.
Second it. Further discussion? All in favor? Signify or raising your hands. Okay, that's 5-0.
Good job, James.
No typos.
Moving on to old business, Ready-Mix Companies Incorporated, Expansion of Garage for Washbay, 541 Portland Street, MAP R72-7A, RCI District, Approval of Findings of Facts. So, this is an application that we, you remember from two weeks ago, three weeks ago, rather, that we approved, and the only thing that we needed to do was go over the findings of facts and approve this for the application.
I've got questions on three of the findings.
Okay.
Numbers 14, 15, and 17.
Let's go with 14.
Well, let's do 15, because it's easy. It just, it's, there's no sentence there.
Oh, yes.
It just says, "This standard."
Well, let's pencil that in right now. This standard has been met, right?
Yes. Correct.
Anything amplifying?
No.
I've got questions on 14 and 17. Is this really a public water supply and a public sewer? I thought it was a private well. Do we have public water that goes out to Route 4?
No.
No.
So, 14 and 17...
Not lost or getting it.
Numbers 14 and 17 need to be rewritten.
Okay.
Because I remember on the sidewalk, he pointed out to the well, he pointed out where the well was.
He did.
In the back of the property.
All right, so 14 and 15 need to be reworked. What was the other one?
And 17.
14, 15, 17.
Because I think it's a septic, not a public.
Yeah, 15 would just be NA, though, right?
Well, no, I mean...
You can say NA, you can also say "this standard has been..."
Based on the well and how little water he's going to use, I'm comfortable just saying the standard is met on number 15.
Yep. Yeah, those adjustments can be made easy enough.
But we should finish this sentence.
Absolutely.
What do we want 14 to say?
It's, it's a well and a...
We can say "this standard has been met." The development has private water located, yeah, private well located on the property.
And they have had?
Yes.
Right along?
All right. Located on property. 17?
I mean, it's...
Has been met.
It's got a septic system.
And strike the site has public water and sewer. So, what are we striking on 17?
Everything.
Everything besides "this standard has been met"?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, you want to leave the sewer system will not receive any washwater, because...
It's a septic system.
Yeah, it's not going in the septic system.
It would say "septic system."
A septic system will not receive any...
Yeah.
It's a separate holding...
Okay.
...system for that.
So, the only thing that we're striking is the site has public water and sewer, period. The septic system will not receive any washwater from the use of an onsite evaporator.
Correct.
Correct. Yep.
Number 15 will say "this standard has been met," and number 14 will say "this standard has been met." The development has private well, has a private well located on the property.
Yep.
Any other changes?
No.
Okay, so, the motion would be for approval of the conditional use findings for Ready-Mix Companies as amended.
I move?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Signify or raising your hands, and that's 5-0. All right. Continuing on old business, Major Subdivision, Preliminary Plan, 115 Old Pine Hill Road Map, U7 Lot 47, LRB Leasing is the applicant. I'd like to turn it over to the Town Planner.
Can I just make a comment before we continue?
Oh, yes.
That Mr. Bodwell is a current client of mine, not on this property. I'm not getting any financial or any other gain from working with him for this particular project, but I just wanted to be very clear and open about that. I am going to recuse myself from this and go sit in the audience while you guys take care of business.
Okay. So, Nicole's recusing herself, so for this application, I'll recognize Sean Winston as a, oh, correct. I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me. I have a very bad memory, apparently.
Yeah.
I'd like to recognize Mike LaRue as the voting member for this application only. Okay, Mr. Town Planner.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening, Board Members. So, this application, the applicant is proposing 16-unit complex. From the base of the, from the base of the density, this application meets the standards established in the ordinance. The plan shows the soils as required and delineates the soil types based on the allagash, well-drained, matasca moderately well-drained, norberg poorly drained, and somewhat poorly drained. The grading proposed shapes, shapes the site from front to back, and several catch basins strategically located north, south, and west corners of the parking area to pick up the water and get it to the proposed stormwater facility at the rear of the development. This facility has a grass underdrain filter system, which will eventually release the stormwater to the field in the surrounding quadrant of the parcel through a stone riprap outlet. Do you guys have your plans? Maybe you want to put your plan in. Thank you, Jay, while I'm reading this. The traffic circulation is now a one-way circulation with two curb openings rather than one. The applicant is proposing two parking spaces per unit, plus six additional spaces for guest parking. The applicant has placed a note on the plan indicating that there is adequate site distance in both directions, and as we saw on our site visit, where they're going to be locating the exit provides more than adequate site distance based on the standards in the ITE booklet. The applicant has provided the analysis of PM peak hour trips as well as daily trip ends. During the peak hour, the applicant has demonstrated that the development will have 11 trips and 107 new trips during a 24-hour period. This should have, this should not have a significant impact on the traffic along Old Pine Hill Road. The applicant has also placed the site distance on the plan. Since this is a one-way circulation, traffic is more, more concerned, the staff is more concerned with making sure the site distance from the suddenly he grasps meets that standard. The distance looking to the left is 400 feet, and this meets the standard, so there should be no issues with regard to the site distance. The applicant at this time has requested three waivers that the board will want to discuss. The first waiver is a request of ordinance Article 7.2. D. 23, providing a hydrogeologic assessment of the site. The second waiver request is Article 12, 12.2. C. 2. J., providing sidewalks. And, excuse me, number three is Article 7, Section 7.14.1, which is provide a written soil erosion and sedimentation control plan. The board will need to determine what you want to do with these waivers prior to finding the application complete. Completeness, barring any other significant issues the board may come up with, I would suggest that the board could consider this a complete application and set the date for a public hearing, since the board has already held a sidewalk. Next steps for the planning board will be to act on the waivers. Based on the waiver action, find the application complete and set the date for the public hearing. That's all I have at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jay Stevens. I'm with Civil Consultants, and Civil Consultants did the surveying, engineering on this project. And we put together that application booklet. As Lee-Jay mentioned, we have a full set of plans, which I believe you all have at least a reduced set in your packets. There are several of the large-size sets that are in the planning office, if anybody wants to look at them, a little bigger one. But basically, we've, we show all of the items that are required for a submittal. As Lee-Jay mentioned, we have a, two access points onto Old Pine Hill Road. What we're looking at is a one-way in at the, would be the upper entrance. You come in, you go through past all the different parking areas, and then you come out down here to go whichever direction on Old Pine Hill Road. We have submitted the plans to the Water Department, the Sewer District, and the Fire Chief to get their comments back. We may even have all those before a public hearing at whatever date it's set. We actually have received yesterday a letter from the Water Department saying that they've approved everything that's on here, and they're good to go. The Sewer District asked for another set of the plans, so they could have multiple copies to look at, and we haven't chased down the Fire Department yet, but that, that is another group that we'll be talking with. As mentioned, the site, we're capturing all of the water from all of the improvements and running it to a grass underdrain filter in the back. So, all of these parking areas, all of these rooftops, all of the decks, all of the slopes and the hills through here along the roadways, all of this water is being captured, and it will be treated, because it has to go through the grass undergrain filter, just to get out and come out into the wetlands that are already out there. We do control the flows for all of the storm events that were looked at, including the 100-year storm, and we were using the extreme precipitation tables, not the old SCS tables. So, we're, we're looking at these bigger storms that we've had recently, and this system adequately collects the water and filters it all through, you know, over time to come up. The depth of this little pond in the back, it, it only gets two feet deep, even in that 100-year event. So, it's a very shallow, simple little process. We do have oil-water separators in this catch basin, which is catching... More than adequately addressed the stormwater concerns. The plan includes all the appropriate playing, notations and methods for addressing erosion control and sediment control during construction and after construction. The waivers requested, the first one was for the hydrologic study, which is only required because this is considered a major subdivision. And it's only considered a major subdivision because there's 16 units. You know, on the scheme of things, as a, just playing a site plan, it wouldn't even be that much of a major site plan, so that's why we're requesting not to do a hydrogeologic study. We are on city water, we are on city sewer, and we're, we're doing nothing to adversely impact groundwater in the area. We're not withdrawing any water from the ground, so we don't see any value in a hydrogeologic study. The request for a waiver on the sidewalks, obviously, that's been brought up before, and probably does need to be discussed again here. And the last request was for a waiver for a written stormwater and erosion control manual. And the rationale for the request was, we couldn't see putting a lot of time into making a fancy book when 90% of the information is already on the plans. And if you look at the stormwater management reports, that we did give a couple of copies to the town, we didn't kill a million trees to give everybody a copy of the thing, there is a full erosion and stormwater management section that includes all the checklists that your stormwater person usually requires for your MS4 stuff. So, all of that stuff is already documented in that document and on the plans, and we just don't see any value in putting together another separate stormwater management report. So, that's why that request was in there. I don't know if Mr. Bodwell has anything he'd like to throw out there?
I think, I am Les Bodwell, the owner of the property. I guess the only, you know, comments that I would like to add are in reference to the sidewalk. I know we've talked about this, and I don't know where you guys have landed on it. You know, since our conversation, our site visit, you know, I've, I've looked at the road, the roadside on both sides of the property, and I, to me, I just don't see how it's feasible to put sidewalks in there because of the covert, but, you know, that's, that you guys just call it, at the end of the day, I don't, you know, sidewalks in front of this project that go nowhere don't seem to make sense.
To, to just throw an engineering perspective on the sidewalks, we've obviously looked at the road out there while we were at it. The logical side of Old Pine Hill Road for sidewalks is the opposite side from this particular project. In order to put a sidewalk on that side, it will involve right-of-way impacts or property impacts to these houses, which we obviously have no control over, and we have no right to ask for easements from them or anything else. So, it has to be part of a town effort where the town, you know, master planes the whole sidewalk, and then they have, you know, they know what their impact would be on adjacent properties, how it might impact setbacks and so forth on the existing, like, property out here. But it makes no engineering sense to put the sidewalk down this side of the road, which is the only side that we could, you know, financially put it on, so I don't know how to best address that issue with the board. In other towns, we would say we would put funds up against that future sidewalk project, but I understand Berwick doesn't have a mechanism to do that, so I don't have a good suggestion other than the town probably needs to put that kind of mechanism into, into place at some point.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
I think that's all I can add.
Okay, questions from the board for the applicant?
I've got, I'll start. I've got a couple. First thing is, the stormwater plan, I, just from the chart, the pictures that you've given us, are pretty interesting. And is that the first time the Civil Consultants has tried this type of system?
Oh, no, this is the third or fourth one.
How about in our town?
Actually, we, the other project that Mr. Bodwell built up on Cemetery Road has this same system in.
Very similar or about the same?
It's about the same. It's, it's an underdrain system, just like this. It's a shallow, shallow pond.
Can you grab me Nicole's, please?
And it is all set up.
Thank you.
And we put these in, it's, Kittery, we have a project that's got eight of them in it, and they're all, they were actually required by the DEP to be that type of system.
So, it works well?
Well, the DEP's been requiring them. I don't know if they've been in place in any location long enough to know how well they work, but that's the best we have at this point in time.
Mm-hmm. And the waters are going to drain down towards regular Pine, not Old Pine Hill, but down to Pine Hill Road.
Right. It's headed towards Pine Hill Road, but there's a low spot before you get to Pine Hill Road where the wetland's going to...
It's going to catch it.
There's a low spot in here before you get to Pine Hill Road, and then this is all headed down this way. But we actually will be reducing the amount of water that's currently going into the wetland and down that way, so anybody downstream is going to notice less when we're done, because we've actually reduced it somewhat.
The other thing I'd like to cover, and I think it's going to be, it is the sidewalk waiver, because I've had feelings about another very small subdivision just a couple of years ago about that. And, and I've got a few questions before I, you know, I can say the way I feel about it, but, do you know the status on Pine Hill for the sidewalks on the frontage of this site? I mean, can you give us a, an update or a status of what that sidewalk looks like on the Pine Hill?
I don't know if you do know.
I don't know.
Okay, I do know. Because I have a listing that abuts this property. The sidewalks on Pine Hill Road are on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
And probably, I would say, 300 feet down toward town is where they start, so it's not directly in front of this property.
It's just, it ends at Knox Lane, I think.
Nope, keeps coming up.
Does it? That was the extension, that was the extension.
You know what kind of shape they're in?
Good shape.
Yeah, good shape, okay.
That was the new ones that were put in.
They go right up to Terrace Drive, right up to Terrace.
Those were put in a few years ago when they expanded the stormwater line up there, too.
Yeah. So, I guess my comment, with that said, would it make sense for us to explore, even though this is not the side of the road that Mr. Bodwell's going to use for his, his driving entrance and exit, would it make sense? It makes sense to me that Pine Hill is important to have sidewalks, and this is frontage on this property, and does it make sense to consider an option along Pine Hill Road, not Old Pine Hill Road, for a sidewalk extension?
But his property is on the, it's on the opposite side. That's true.
So, you'd have to have a crosswalk.
So, you'd have to get property owners...
I agree, the sidewalk would be on the other side, but it faces, I mean, these are all things I think we've never defined as what do we do in a situation like this, and I know that Jay is saying makes a lot of sense, you know? But it's about time that we fess up a little bit, that when we start building out the town, that developers put into a sidewalk-type fund.
I agree. I sent an email this week, or, yeah, last week, to the town manager and James, and just, and also Tom Wright, the selectman, and just, and I asked him this question. I says, you know, there's a potential application, I was, you know, I was very vague on it, but I said, you know, my, the way that I look at these things is, and I've walked Old Pine Hill Road many times, and I know that the only areas in town where we have sidewalks is where we have stormwater drains, because you have to have that because of ponding and issues like that. You have to have some way to drain that, so you're just, you would create a dam right there. This would be a perfect place to do it, to have sidewalks, because it's kind of close to the library, but I think on his side of the street here would be, would be a good idea, but it, I don't think that engineering-wise, it's feasible. And he asked the Code Enforcement Officer to weigh in on that, have not heard back in a week, so I'm not, I'm not sure. My feeling with it is, I want sidewalks, but I think it's going to create more of a problem and, and in the long run, unless the town was willing to come in there and dig up the road and connect a stormline... dig up the road and connect a storm line to Pine Hill Road.
You mean through, through the property?
No, up Old Pine Hill, continue up Old Pine Hill Road and connect to Pine Hill. The only reason that these sidewalks went in up past, like, Knox Lane was because the town put in those stormwater drains.
Yeah, I mean, they kind of go hand in hand. You know, that kind of worked. But I, I think, you know, this is, we're growing, Pine Hill is growing really fast. And it, and we, it's about time that something is done so that we can start covering these issues.
And that's why I, and, and that's why I sent that email. I says, you know, is there a mechanism? Oh, oh, yeah, you were on the email, too.
Yes, I was.
And, I'm sorry. And I, and then you responded back and said, no, there is no mechanism right, right now to have money set aside for, for a developer in lieu of building their own sidewalks to put into a sidewalk fund.
So if you'd like, I can expand upon that, since I said in my email that I'd rather talk about it.
Yep.
Um, I think that there is a mechanism to, what we would call exact, um, the construction of, or money for a sidewalk as part of the condition of approval for a project like this. However, in doing that, it needs to be direct, a direct correlation to this project. For example, you can't say, well, we want you to, we want you to build, you know, 350 feet of sidewalk a mile away, because there's no nexus to this development. There has to be a direct correlation, direct nexus. But even to do that is a long stretch. The ways that you want to do it would be to develop a sidewalk master plan for the community and know-
Right on it, by the way, sorry.
So that, so that there's a plan-
You have it set by 7:15?
So that there's a plan in place to know where we should have sidewalks because of the residential population and densities and where children are and, you know, where the parks are and, and the whole bit, that gets adopted by the town. Once you have that, then if a development comes in, you can clearly ask for them to construct a sidewalk along their frontage of their property, or across the street if it's directly associated with it. The other thing to do is to develop an impact fee. Much more complicated, um, much more involved, um, but that is another process that could be done. In order to do that, there's lots of formulas that need to be created, and then if the money is not spent for that purpose within seven years under the state law, then you need to return that money back to the developer.
We, Jay, I guess, I guess, so we have, we have impact fees already?
For sidewalks?
Uh, no, it's for recreation, open space right now, but it's not for sidewalks.
And we're the, we're some, like, I'm strongly going to suggest to the selectmen to go take it from open space and do infrastructure instead, so half recreation, half infrastructure, and I think we can do that.
Well, yes, you can do that, but again, um, there's all types of analysis that's going to be needed in order to justify sewer extensions, water extensions, or sidewalks. Not only densities of population, not only locations, but cost to construct those particular items. Um, you need to know what those costs are per foot, otherwise you can't ask for them to just give us $50,000 to build a sidewalk. It has to be based on whatever the construction costs are per foot to do that. So there's, there's, there are mechanisms available, but it's, it's going to take some time to develop that. So, yes, I mean, this is a tough issue, I understand, because of the location and that the sidewalk was built across the street with the other development. I mean, I clearly would love to see a sidewalk here as well with the number of units there are, but I'm not sure that there's a real good mechanism in place right now to do that.
Even, there's no stormwater drains.
Correct. There's a, there's a ditch.
It would be an engineering nightmare.
That's right. I mean, you've got a-
The town would have to invest in digging up Old Pine Hill Road, and we've even talked about Sullivan Street-
Correct.
-going up to the library. We've talked about, that's a perfect place for sidewalks.
Yeah.
And there's ditches and culverts on both sides.
I mean, you're, you're looking at, for example, on, on Old Pine Hill, in front of here or a little further either way, you know, you've got a four-foot, I'm going to say even five-foot, because I'm a short guy, ditch that's on the side of that road, that you'd need to basically expand the road, build the sidewalk, and underdrain all of that. Um, there's a hefty cost to that. And to do a 300-foot section just isn't, I don't want to say isn't worth it, certainly it's worth it, but, you know, to maximize the ability to do that type of thing, you know, you'd be looking at needing to really do a, a long stretch of road. And, and as, as Jay mentioned, in this particular case, even if you did that, it's a sidewalk going from nowhere to nowhere. So that's why, again, a master plan would be great. CIP program helping to, for the town to kick in to build some of that as well would also go a long way.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions you have, Paul?
No, I, I mean, I can see the quandary we're in, and I, there's got to be a solution somewhere.
Well, it's creating the sidewalk master plan.
Yeah. That's, that's a huge first start.
But that, this sidewalk issue has been plaguing us as long as I've been on the board, probably as long as Paul's been on the board. You know, it, it, we need to have some type of plan in place.
Not that one.
Not, not that one. But there needs to be some type of plan in place, so I think that needs to be a hot priority for us, too, because this always comes up, we say, well, gee, there's really nothing we can do, because it doesn't make sense to have the sidewalks, but it would really be able, nice to capture $10,000 that that would have cost and then put it towards something else in town.
Sure.
So let's bring this up with the selectmen then, too, on June 27.
So I have a, I have a priority list going, I have different colors for different segments outlining, like, where a top priority should be. But, yeah.
Okay.
I was working on it today.
Let's talk about this with them on the 27th.
Yeah, and this, we're, right now, we're sitting, looking for a complete plan for preliminary approval. And I want to make sure that it's noted that, um, the sidewalk issue is, to me, is active. It's an active topic.
Might start over again? We're, we're looking to do application complete tonight.
Well, that's true, we are. And I think the plan is complete, but I think there's a hole in the sidewalk waiver, the, the thinking and talking that we need to do about it. There may be a solution that we haven't thought of it. I'd like, you know, the, the town, the board of selectmen, town manager, to, to think about it. You know, what are we going to do? We, we lost out on the first condominium project on Old Pine Hill Road. We had a three lot, I think, across the street that went in. I voted to have sidewalks there, even if it was a small subdivision, but it, it didn't pass. And I, I think we have to, you know, face the music at some point, and this is 16 units.
But, but we have nothing in place. He's already filed his application. If we were to do something, I don't understand how we could make it retroactively apply anyway.
Not on this project.
It's good that we're having this discussion, and it's clear we need to come to a solution.
Correct.
But it's equally clear, based on what I've heard tonight and the previous time that we talked about this, that we're not in a position to require it.
I, I don't agree with you.
Well, I understand that, that's why we have votes.
Yeah.
And, and what I said the last time, I will repeat again, somebody if you need to explain to me why, if we're going to require sidewalks on this project, how we can justify not having done it on a project across the street?
Well, if you'd like further clarification, if you'd-
Nothing else, nothing has changed other than the passage of time.
You know, if we need more time to act on the waiver, we can table the waiver.
Well, but that means that the application isn't complete, if we table the waiver.
And that we table the application at this point.
Well, I, I appreciate the discussion about sidewalks. I don't understand what could possibly happen in the next several weeks that would allow us to do anything to require sidewalks to be put here. There, there may come a time, and let's hope that there is, but it's not going to be soon enough to have any effect on the request for a waiver here, which I think, based on what we've done and what I've heard tonight, I believe a granting of the waiver is appropriate, but we will have a, a vote on it. But whatever we put in place is going to take too long, and it's not going to, I don't see how we can retroactively apply it to this application anyway.
The chairman's looking at me, so.
No, you still look like you wanted to say something.
Well, Nels is correct. Um, I mean, the, the cow is out of the barn on this. Once an application's been submitted and it's, and it's active like that, unless you were to table it and not take action on it and develop, you know, a master plan and the whole bit, I mean, it's, um, um, yeah, I can't remember the name of it there, there is a legal termination, interpretation of that, but basically, um, you, you could not ask the applicant at this point to do anything on that, because they've spent money, is the term for it, and I apologize, it's left by head. They've spent money towards their application and with an understanding that they were not going, that they may not need to do that. And so if the application continues to proceed, um, to go back and retro, as Nels used the words, retroactive, retroactively require them to build a sidewalk, would, you'd, you'd probably be in hot water.
When I went to law school many years ago, we would have called this reliance.
That wasn't the word I was looking for, but it is a good word, yes.
Um, you know, he, he applied, the law was what it was at the time it was applied.
Correct.
I don't see how, if we change the law, we can have it apply backwards, retroactively.
The law, the law being, um, impact fees, for example, or having a sidewalk master plan in place with some mechanism, talking of mechanism.
I mean, I think this is, this is a very good example, and the reason why we need to act quickly to do all of those things.
And, yes.
The fact of the matter is, we haven't done them yet, so I don't see how we can hold up this application while we're trying to put something in place to, I mean, I think that-
Not being an engineer, Niall, so I'm thinking, I'm looking at this plan, and I've walked the property, and I know there's a sidewalk on Pine Hill Road on the other side of the road. People want a way to walk, especially in this area, to walk downtown. Is it possible for people to get to the other side of this lot and take the sidewalk on Pine Hill, for example? For example? You know, things like that, or maybe a little more creative thinking to make this, I mean, sidewalks are for safety, and that's one of the things in our preamble in the land use ordinance.
Well, I, you know, Mr. Bodwell has been before several times.
And I think, given up that easy, to me.
And I have no doubt that he is a good citizen, and, and by granting the waiver, that doesn't mean that he can't voluntarily do what makes sense to be done, and I'm sure he's more than willing, he's said that on more than one occasion.
Well-
It's a separate question than what we can require somebody to do.
I, I think that, yes, and I think that, um, we kind of touched on the issue early on when the project was in sketch, and certainly it's something that the board could ask for if they choose to, although there are permitting ramifications, not here, but with the state and whatnot. But that would be, you know, can he construct some sort of a cinder dirt paved walkway that gets from Old Pine Hill Road where the, where the, where the units are to Pine Hill Road to convey people across, such as we asked, you know, what is your plan to do something on Old Pine, on Pine Hill Road? We talked about the park and that sort of thing. You know, for him to build a, some sort of a cinder walkway or something that's, you know, accessible for people to get there is certainly something you could ask for. There are permitting ramifications, because you're, you're having to go through a wetland, because that whole area down there is a wetland, so there's permitting ramifications for him to do that, but you could certainly condition the project on that being done if you chose to do that.
Still doesn't bring in the sidewalks.
Correct.
Correct. You have to cross a busier, more dangerous road.
And it, and it doesn't make it public, by any, it just applies to the people who live there.
That's right. That's right.
But it may solve the, the safety issue of getting, um, people, kids, you know, across to where there is a sidewalk, where they can come, ride their bikes, or walk downtown.
It's safer to go at Old Pine Hill and to Sullivan Street.
If I could throw in two, two cents' worth of a bad point on this, having been through the Army Corps of Engineers more than once, the Army Corps of Engineers would look at this and say, there is perfectly good access on Old Pine Hill Road, we will give you no permit to do anything in this wetland, because you have perfectly good access up here to a road and stuff like that, and they might not let us even put a walkway across this. And they, they trump even the state when it comes to that one. And while we would initially start with the state, everything you put into the state for wetlands impact ultimately goes to the Corps.
Correct.
Where they're input after the fact, and you can have a state permit, the Corps comes along and says, sorry, we see no good reason to let you do that, your state permit's invalid. So I, I don't want to put my client in a situation of saying, we're going to go try and get a permit, that in all likelihood, we're not going to be able to get, because we have, you know, this parcel has perfectly good access to Pine Hill Road, this parcel has perfectly good access to Old Pine Hill Road. It's a convenience to cross that, but it, it's trumped by the Army Corps' opinion that that's an important water feature for, you know, animals and things like that, and I don't want to tempt fate.
Yeah, I mean, and, and so the, the bigger issue also is, at this point, is that, let's say we have the opportunity to get a sidewalk in front of that project. It's leading to nowhere. To the north, understood, because we're still, haven't seen development out that way. But we also have development that has already occurred, like the condo project south of there. We can't go back on them and make them put that sidewalk, and that becomes a responsibility to the town to do that. So in the meantime, who knows how many years out, you have a sidewalk that's still going to nowhere. So I, I mean, I don't know what the solution is, but that's the reality of it. We can, even if you conditioned him on constructing that sidewalk in front of his property, it's going to go to nowhere.
I, I realize that.
Yeah.
And if we had done that on the other project just south of there-
Yeah.
...and the three house lots across the street-
Then, correct, correct.
-when, when we had the opportunity, at that point in time, we would be saying, well, we can't do it, dogs, we didn't do it then.
Right.
You know, keep throwing it going forever.
Yep, it does. And that's why we need a master plan and, yep.
It's not going to be ready, James.
We can now get it to 30 if that's-
Been percolating for three years, right. It's frustrating.
It is, sure.
And you're seeing fast growth, and, and your, your hands are tied.
And don't think these aren't universal issues, it's not just Burwick that deals with it.
But we, this is where we live.
Understood. No, understood.
Do you have anything else?
Nope.
I have a question on landscaping and screening, there just doesn't seem to be a lot of it. At least on the page that I'm looking at. Which page should I go to?
L1, should be, step one from the back. There's L1. And there's an L1.1. But L1 is the landscaping that shows-
L1.1?
L1.0.
1.0 is the one that shows the trees that are being put in and the layout of the trees along, you know, some along the laundry lines.
Okay, that's much better than the one that I was just looking at, okay.
I'm sorry if I confused you.
No, that's... Is there any signs, signage? What are you calling this development, again?
Double G apartments.
Is there any, is, you going to have a sign outside or just nothing?
Picture of the two Gs. I, I probably will put a sign up at some point. Does it have to be on the plan?
Yes.
It should be, they, they deserve to see what-
I keep saying I'm going to, and I never do, on these projects. Keep saying, you know, it'd be nice to have a sign out here, and I end up just putting the street number that's required by the fire department.
I would suggest that we could have that put on it, the final submission plan set if they need to. Gives them a little bit of time to think about where or what.
Yeah, and if it's going to be lighted and all that? You know, just something to think about.
We did not plan on having a lighted side.
Okay.
Uh, the only lighting that we've got proposed is literally safety lighting down, you know, along where the parking is. There's no new lighting proposed along Old Pine Hill Road. And what we're saying, and it's noted on there, is that the lights that are down here will be side shielded, you know, as required by the town, so that your, uh, lumin level-
Dark sky compliant.
That type of thing, and the lumin levels at property lines will not exceed what's allowed at, which I think is point- which I think is point one for candles.
Any lights on the building?
And actually, the only lights on would be your little door light. You know how you have a little light? It's a hundred watt bulb type of thing. That's all that's proposed. On a, on a previous project, he had lights mounted on the building, but you told me you weren't going to do that on this one, so. So these would be the only lights outside of, you know, the one, the hundred watt bulb you have outside your, your door window, you know, your door and your entry. All of the doors are set up so that every two has got like a little landing, you know, and the two doors are right next to each other. So it's not like there's a whole row of lights on the building. It's just the ones right there at the, at the entry points.
Those, those lights as well are, um, down lights. They're not just an open bulb that shines light. They shine light down on the patio in the front of the building.
Niles? David? Mike? All right, thank you. I would like to ask you-
Yes, sir.
About the request for waiver for, um, provide a hydrogeologic assessment of the site. So I'm just, I'm looking at contours and I'm looking at, you know, there's going to be a lot of area that's disturbed and it's going to be, I know they have a drainage, but I know that it's also going into, after that, it's going into somewhat poorly drained and then poorly drained soil, and then there's, there's that pond area. I'm just a little, little confused about, what, what's your professional opinion on, on requiring that? Because, I mean, first glance, I'm looking at it and I would say, no, I think it should be required.
Hydrogeologic studies are really good if you have, if you have wells or septic systems because the wells are, um, could be taking a lot of water from any aquifer that's in the area. And so you want to know what kind of recharge may or may not be occurring from that. By the same token, you're also looking at, um, what kind of effluent and where the effluent flows. This project's on sewer and water, so it really doesn't have a need to, to look at the hydrogeologic study for this area. That's more important if you're looking at wells and septic systems.
Okay, and then are you, how comfortable are, I mean, would you be comfortable also with, you know, they're requesting the waiver of the Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan, but putting it on the plans instead of coming up with a eighty-page booklet?
Yep. Um, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, most, most applications today, you'll get a sheet, um, one page in your plan set, that's all of the notes for erosion control, especially winter construction erosion control. Um, that's more important. Um, but as long as they put it on the plan showing where the silt fences are going to be located and how they're going to be placed, which is a typical standard that most applications will have on it that are, that are well done, um, that should be sufficient for this project. If you had steep slopes or slopes that were, um, very close to other residential homes that, you know, you, you knew you were going to have erosion, especially during heavy rain periods or, um, winter construction, then you'd want to have, um, a booklet. But there again, you know, they can produce those booklets. Um, they're, you know, yay thick and they've got all the directions on how to do that stuff. Those books are only as good as the contractor that's out in the field, willing to read them and make sure that they're doing everything right and that the town has a third-party inspector making sure that they're following all those directions. So, I mean, I think if they put it on the plans and put the detail as to how they're going to trench the, the soil, the silt fences in and where they're going to be located, that should be more than sufficient for this. This is not a steep slope situation.
Okay, further discussion for, or further questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, so we have a few things to act on here this evening. We have to act on the waivers first. So the first one we'll look at here is a request for a waiver for the Berwick subdivision ordinance, Article seven, decimal two, decimal D, decimal two, three, which is provide a hydrogeologic assessment of the site. Somebody care to make a motion?
I move that we grant the waiver based on the explanation that's given to us by the town planner that this is on public water and sewer.
And seconded by David. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. Request a waiver of Berwick subdivision ordinance, Article twelve, decimal two, decimal C, decimal two, decimal J. Requirement, provide sidewalks. I, I will make a, I will make a motion then that we waive the request, that we, we waive the, excuse me, waive the requirements for providing sidewalks.
Well, second that based on the discussion we've had this evening. And in particular, that it is premature for us to require sidewalks on a project in this location at this time.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor? Signify by raising your hands. All opposed? Okay, that's four of, um, that's four yes and that's one opposed. Number three, request a waiver for Berwick land use ordinance, Article seven, decimal fourteen, decimal one. Provide a written soil erosion and sedimentation control plan.
I move that we grant the waiver based on the explanation given to us by the town planner that all of the relevant information is found elsewhere in the documents that have been provided.
Seconded. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. Okay. So, uh, now, we've had the application in front of us. We've got a very detailed book here. It's probably the most detailed application that I've ever seen, the most put together.
Very well done.
Yeah.
And I work with these folks all the time and this is one of the better applications that I've seen.
So the motion would be for approval of the applica-, or finding the application complete. Okay, we're not approving the application. The motion would be for finding the application complete.
I move that we find this application to be complete.
Seconded. And seconded. Further discussion? All in favor? That's four and then all opposed? And that's one. Four to one. Okay, um, and now we need to set a date for a public hearing. Next meeting will be on, uh, June twenty-first. Is that enough time for you? Does that work for you? So we'll set the public hearing at six thirty on June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
In this very room.
I may call that for two thousand nineteen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, seeing Nicole return to our board here. I'll make her a regular voting member once again.
Why, thank you.
Continuing an old business, minor subdivision at Cranberry Meadow and Old Sanford Road, map R forty-two, lot three, applicant Clement. So, Mr. Town Planner?
Yes, sir.
What do you got?
I got nothing. Um, I did not do a memo on this application for you. I apologize, but there was really, there's really nothing for me to, um, provide a memo to. The applicant had, based on our last discussion, the applicant had provided a plan that showed the overall lot.
Is the applicant here? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. I didn't see you sitting back there.
I did have a, a phone conversation with him. Um, I guess, uh, we, after we had that conversation, um, because the, um, I wanted to make sure that the lot was shown on the plan that gets recorded. Um, and I think as part of any approvals that you grant with, you assured me that, um, there were going to be the plan showing the lots that you folks have as well as the other plan that shows the full lot, the full third lot, if you will. That will all be recorded in the registry together. They just won't be on one plan. Um, and I'm fine with that. I'm comfortable with that as long as they're attached to each other. There are no impacts to this. It's three lots, basically two lots actually, um, and no roads, no nothing. Um, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
Essentially, we're amending a subdivision.
That's correct.
We talked about this, yeah, three weeks ago.
Yes.
You know, what's interesting on the side here on these notes here, Butler Lane and Butler Avenue. Shows town records. At a legal meeting of the inhabitants of the town of Berwick on Saturday, November fifth, eighteen eighty-one.
And they go back even further.
Yeah. That's amazing, yeah.
You wonder why they weren't home watching Lawrence's book on Saturday.
Do you have anything, sir?
Uh, no, I don't. Um, any other questions?
Questions for the applicant? So, yeah, so essentially, we were just looking for the full, the full plan, just, just go around and I think-
The two-sheeter is.
Yep. That's what we were looking for. So procedurally-
Procedurally, um, great question. No, I only mean that in the sense that it's a, it's a minor subdivision? Um, it's actually only two lots. Um, I'm not sure if a public hearing is required.
Sorry, this is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing, so, um, we, yes, that's correct. We did set it and this is the public hearing. So you can open the public hearing, um, see if anybody speaks, close the public hearing afterwards.
Well, no, we would have normally had the public hearing before old business.
Yeah, I messed up on the agenda.
Did you advertise this?
Yes. Yeah.
And then could take an action vote. I don't administer that part, so I'm just rever-, regurgitating the process.
Yeah, it's been, it's been noticed twice in the paper and then noticed in the letters and then said. I just messed up on the agenda, which you can-
Okay, so this is a public hearing on this application for a minor subdivision at Cranberry Meadow and Old Sanford Road, map R forty-two, lot three, applicant, Mr. Clement, or the Clement family. Um, so this will be our public hearing. Anybody want to come forward and talk about this application? This application alone, we're going to discuss the application and then vote on it, um, or the plans, vote on it afterwards. But this is a public hearing for this, this project only. Everybody was notified? Okay.
I was notified. I'm under butter.
Okay.
Thank you.
You just saved James's job.
See, nobody come forward for the public hearing? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. All right, now we can get on to business here. So procedurally, so how would, because we don't necessarily have, you know, fact of findings or anything like that. This is just an amendment to the subdivision.
Correct. I would, I, I actually have a draft set of findings and fact, um, that I, again, I don't prepare them because I gotta be able to put the information from this meeting that has occurred. So, um, I would have them available for you for the next meeting. And, um, that is, of course, if you vote on this tonight. Um, or if you choose to table this until you have those available. But, um, I want to be able to include any discussion that we've had tonight as part of the record.
Well, we've done that in the past, but I don't necessarily like doing that sometimes because I just, I don't like backtrack, because I know like tonight, we voted on the approval of findings and facts for the ready mix.
Correct.
I don't really necessarily, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yep.
I don't think that there's a, you know, a huge rush on our part to put this through. What do you think, Paul?
I would ask the applicant. I'll rush him in.
A rush?
A rush.
You all lined up? This is, I mean, it's, the findings are fact. I mean, we just, we just modified, uh, the findings of fact on the last one of the applicant. So it shows that sometimes it's putting the cart before the horse. Usually, it's easy to fix. It's, uh, typos and that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And I think on something like this, uh, the findings are fact, they're going to be, um, pretty simple.
I can tell you that because of the way this, this is, most of the findings of fact that you're going to get are going to say that, that that is not applicable. This is not applicable. This is not applicable. Um, because most of it is not applicable.
Yeah.
Niles?
Could, could we, um, vote on a motion if somebody should make it?
Yep.
That we approve the amendment with a condition that the documents be attached and recorded as you earlier said?
Absolutely.
So if someone were to make such a motion, we could then vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, good to know. Make a distinction. It's not an amendment. It's actually a new minor subdivision. Oh, because earlier-
Well, you have lot one, which is now a formerly added. So there's already a lot one that exists. This is the lot two and the remaining land, basically, which gets us to the three lots.
All right.
Can I, can I, can I ask you, but what makes the third lot on that? I, I'm familiar with the areas.
Remaining land.
I know that there's only two homes that are going in there and one of them is already there. And, uh, what, you know, what makes it a subde-, uh, you know, development with two lots there?
The remaining, the remaining land.
The state law around subdivisions is, is very quirky and very long. But it's basically three lots within a period constitutes a subdivision. The third lot in this case. There's also a, there's also another piece of that law that says that if a town exempts lots that are over forty acres in size, then that's not considered a lot in the subdivision. This town doesn't do that, nor the third lot or the remaining land of the owner is forty acres or more. So it's not, no longer exempt. So by creating the second lot, you've created a third, a dividing, which creates a third lot. And I can tell you-
Okay, I can understand that. I was just trying to do my addition.
You can put five land use terms?
There was one, there was there, so now it's a third lot because of that.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Yeah, it used to be, uh, a few years back, a remaining, the remaining piece, if it were forty acres or more, was automatically exempt.
Right. Yep.
Further questions? You know, I really liked the way that you formulated that motion.
Let's try it again?
Let's try it again. Let's see if you can go two for two.
Move that we approve the amendment of the minor subdivision with a condition that the, all of the, the documents be attached to one another and be recorded appropriately.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five zero. All right, so we'll have that next meeting.
And you also need, um-
We need to move the findings of fact.
For signing? Oh, they are, okay. I didn't realize that. Great, okay.
So we'll have the findings of facts the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
They're, they're pretty close to being done. I just was not ready tonight since I want to be able to-
Do you think that it would be wise to have another note on the plan describing what just happened? That we, you know, there's really no existing table. Hi, there's nothing out there that we're amending.
We're only soni-, signing one Mylar? Just this one? Do you have a Mylar pen? Or should we just use our regular old pens?
Sharpie?
A Shopey?
Shopey? Did I say that?
Nobody got a Shopey? No.
I was like, oh my god!
Figured our town planner-
No, this, this is just a one, first sheet. Yeah, but it's the same thing that Dave's got.
We just need to sign the one?
It should be a, the, the whole perimeter should be on a separate eight sheets, if they could stage. And the Mylar should be just the two plots for the hall, correct?
Yeah, the Mylar's got the two house lots.
And then there should be eight sheets assigned for the perimeter on the big ones, which would all be recorded.
Yeah, so we have to sign all of these then?
Yeah, but this one's only got the two lots for the houses. It doesn't have the whole thing on it.
Well, the, the other one doesn't have to be signed, does it?
No.
No, they just need to be, they just need to be recorded to get it together. They don't need all to be signed.
Which will be done by the surveyor? It's just, it was a lot of work to try to get the two lots on the, on the big parcel. It's just, it was a lot of work to try to get the two lots on the, on the big parcel.
You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for old business. We're gonna, we amended our agenda here for new business. And I know you've been patiently waiting here, so we'll, we'll get to you guys right now. We'll talk about that mobile home park that's on School Street. James, you, if you could come to the podium. So you obviously know about that because the applicant had to come to...
We actually, we met Tuesday with Steve. It's actually not really a mobile home park. Lee, Jay and I talked because it's two separate lots. I, no, I didn't, I did not say that. I said because they're two, two different lots.
You said it was the same owner, therefore qualified as a mobile home park.
It says a parcel of land under unified ownership designed and/or used to accommodate three or more mobile homes. That's our definition of mobile home park. So it would be a parcel of land under unified ownership. That's kind of, that is up for clarification, really.
So it's two, it's two parcels? And they're under, and they're under different ownership?
Yeah, they're, they're actually under different ownership. If, if, the way, the way assessors look at property, you would know this, Nicole. If they were, even if they were two separate parcels, if they were under Nicole facto, and both of them were Nicole facto, then they could be looked at as one parcel.
Right.
But in this particular case, one is Mr. Hall, and the other is Mr. Hall and somebody else.
Okay.
So there's two separate deeds, which makes it clearly two separate parcels.
Separate parcels, yeah.
On one small parcel, there is one unit. On the other parcel, there is two units. It won't become a mobile home park until they try to propose a third unit.
Onto that one.
That would become a mobile home park, and then it would be scrutinized through the planning board as a conditional use permit for a mobile home park.
But why, why wouldn't this have to go through the planning board to begin with? Because it's not considered a mobile home park?
Correct.
Because to skirt around making it a mobile home park, you just put somebody else on the deed.
Correct, and that's what he did.
When did that happen?
Within months, within the last few months.
Well, yeah, but putting somebody else on the deed, or has it always been like that?
Are we 100% sure that that's what the deed is?
I am, yes. We've looked at the tax assessor's records.
Okay.
And there's, they're listed as two people on the larger lot, and one person on the smaller lot.
Has the code enforcement officer been out to the property to inspect the property? Did they receive a, I, I would think with a mobile home, with a, with a mobile home, you still have to get a certificate of occupancy, right?
Yeah, so the two mobile homes were permitted last year. And they're pretty close, they're close together. And based off of Note 1 and the dimensional requirements, the setback was reduced by the average of the butters setback.
Can I ask something about that, though? Where you guys took the average of the two butters, which is me and the other person that owns that property.
We didn't do anything.
Well...
The code enforcement officer, yeah, okay.
Where the code enforcement approved it, okay? Now, if I want to change the shape of my house, can I still use that boundary line? As, let's say I want to put it on, I don't have a foundation in the back of my house. It's a crawl space. All right, I do want to take that down, put it on a foundation. Can I still use that, where'd he go? Can I still use that property line where my house is right now?
Talking about for your setbacks?
For my setback. That doesn't change, right?
Your setback shouldn't change.
At all. If I want to tear that house down, I can still use that setback.
Correct.
Okay, because we took the average of...
Correct, that setback doesn't change.
But I would clearly confirm that with the code officer.
Yeah, I would, because there's an incident that, I'm not that familiar with yours, but this one was on Cranberry Meadow Road, and it went through a bunch of variances, at least the long variance process, because of a setback. And it was, it hinged on the word replacement in the land use ordinance. I think you're probably okay, and I think that word has been added now.
I just want to put a foundation in.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to do under my house.
Right.
I think you're probably fine, but code enforcement is the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, can I ask, what about the...
If you could just come to the podium, please?
I will.
Yeah, just so, for our viewers at home.
Now, what about the fence? How do I, am I talking to the, you know, the correct people to get a permit?
Well, let's find out. What's the, what's the ordinance on a fence? It's six, six feet.
Six feet.
You talk with code enforcement to get a permit.
All right, so can I?
For anything above six feet, you need a permit.
I need a permit.
Anything above 16, yeah.
Well, you do want to check that with the code officer because state law says anything above six feet is a spite fence.
Yes.
No, no, it's, right, there is a spite fence, but that's if it's a spite.
It's, that's really up to loose interpretation because I just went through the same thing on my own property, and you want to be very careful about that.
Yep, okay.
Because you're at a planning board meeting complaining about a trailer park, which indicates...
Okay, then, if, if I wouldn't be allowed to put up that fence, then he would have to put a buffer in, so we can't see that.
You'd have to talk to code enforcement.
And was there any requirement for buffering when, when it was approved? Because I don't see a lot of buffering there at all.
Does code have any per, you know, ask for buffering?
Well, if it's not a mobile home park...
Not without a, not without, like, a conditional use.
It's different if someone wanted to put a stick build home there.
Yeah.
And they require buffering. I don't know that there's a standard that requires it under, with a single-family home.
Not with a single-family home. I don't think there is either.
If you can put them in the house as close together, that is, that's commercial, right?
That's a building code issue, which doesn't get on here.
So I'd have, to get the, so to get the fence raised, I'd have to go see who? Who do I have to ask?
I'm not your code enforcement officer.
Okay.
I really wish that we can help you right now.
Yeah.
These issues, because, because of the way that...
Well, I'm glad I found out, because I was just gonna go ahead and do it, and I didn't know there was a rule.
Well, the reason, because it's, it didn't turn into a, you know, a mobile home park. It really takes the, our authority away from that, and it leaves it to the, to the code enforcement officer at that point. You know, we deal with subdivisions and things like that. You know, a single-family home going up doesn't come before us. Not every building permanent town comes before us. Only things that are, like subdivisions and businesses and things of that nature.
Now, what about the erosion? I mean, you guys, this guy here, I mean, you guys really enforce the erosion and the water drainage.
Once again, that's a subdivision.
All right, but my fence, I mean, my yard is going down his driveway because he dug it down so deep. It's just washing away.
All, unfortunately, I mean, it's not this board... It's all the code enforcement officer that you need to deal with on those issues.
You know, the code enforcement officer works with this board, but then he also works outside of this board, where he goes and he does his building inspections.
Is this the same guy that works in South Boro?
Correct.
No, no.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, 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 that was Joe. I'm sorry, we have a new one. Yes, it, we don't, it's not Joe anymore.
Correct.
Mark.
Yeah.
Okay, now, do I have to go to a town meeting? Or do we talk privately?
No, no, he has office hours. He's, he works in James's office. He has office hours here.
Yeah, not knowing your site, and again, you know, this is just asking. You said you have a six-foot fence.
Right now, yeah.
But it's been, you know, the, what holds it up has actually been undermined. That's one issue you have. And then, were you saying that the lot next door where the mobile homes were placed, there is an elevation drop from your yard to their yard?
Yeah, he took out three feet of dirt. Yeah, he just took it right out so he could put the road in.
So where is the six feet measured? From your side of the fence or the opposite side of the fence?
It's my, my fence. Yeah, my side of the fence. So on his side of the fence, I probably, it's probably nine feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, he's going to be looking at. But if he puts in a retaining wall, then that, that all changes, you know, to help protect my fence.
Yeah.
You know, so I see what you're saying, yes. Yeah, that changes. But he took, he took the dirt out. The dirt was originally straight. It was flat. He took it all out.
Are they allowed to do that? What are the rules for...
Yeah, I'm just wondering. I mean, you can't, you can't send water on your butters lawn, for example.
And you can't just, you can't take that much soil out? Or don't you need a permit to remove certain amount of soil?
The amount of material here, you will probably need a permit.
Yeah, you, you need a permit to remove so much material, too.
I would think so. Yeah, I mean, you're impacting your neighbor.
Again, it's code enforcement. He needs to go out and take a look and see what's going on and find out how much material...
Did you say that you had a meeting with the town manager coming up and the code enfor... Oh, you already had it?
He said he only needed 10,000 square feet per mobile. And then, of course, the bigger issue was the erosion in his tree being owned and...
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's just the responsibility of what happens.
Yeah.
If it falls over, because there's nothing holding that tree up anymore.
And you brought these concerns up to the code enfor, what did the code enforcement officer say?
And he just said simply, Dave, he did nothing wrong. He's 10,000 square feet per mobile, that's all he knew. He just said, anything about the road going in or the erosion or anything else.
All right, we'll have to...
Very short, to the point, you know.
All right. We should circle back around with this with Steve.
Do you want to talk about one thing about, I mean, this led to a longer discussion about just restricting mobile homes in the CI or R1 district? You guys want to go down that road where mobile homes on a, on a lot, restricting it from CI, R1?
That was, which is a separate topic for a change to land use ordinance, but...
Well, I'm more, yeah, no, that's a separate topic that we can get into. But I'm just more worried about these guys here with, I mean, as far as the town, as far as the CEO's concerned, is this a dead issue, or is there...
I don't think so, because this is really new on our radar. And as far as, like, the town manager's concerns, this is a bigger issue.
Okay.
We talked about it today.
It's the privacy, the erosion. I mean, they're there.
You, you've been impacted as a neighbor, yeah. So that's a civil thing.
I can care less, I just don't want to see them.
Okay.
And I want them to fix it, make it so that my fence doesn't wash down the street.
Yeah.
Right, you pay good...
And if I want to sell it, then if somebody comes in and they say, you know, it's, it's an attraction, not a nuisance.
Exactly.
So that's all I'm asking, so...
Also, you can, you can probably fit more mobile homes on that property as well. So if it, it's a question of it, does it fit in that area? For another day, maybe.
How many squares?
Well, again, if he puts one more, tries to put one more, he has to come to this...
In the double spot, though, right?
Correct.
The other spot, he can still put one more and still be okay with it.
I'm not sure.
Lot's too small.
Okay, okay, all right.
I think this was cut.
If I had one, I would give it to you. You can look me up. I'm all over.
All right. So can...
I'm gonna go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in, though.
Continuing on new business, Nicole?
Okay, so I also have a neighborly problem that brought to my attention. And I'm not here looking for my, I mean, I understand the land use ordinance and how it works. So I'm not looking for anybody to help me with my neighbor problem. But I am looking for, this, this did bring up kind of a point, and a point of clarification that I believe. So I live in the R1 zone, as we mostly know. Actually, right near the property that Les Bodwell's doing the apartments on. And I also have wetlands in my backyard from, you know, that conjoins with his. What I've run into is the land use ordinance regarding animal husbandry in the R1 zone, which on our land use table, there is no animal husbandry allowed in the R1 zone, not even with a permit. The issue is the definition of animal husbandry in our land use ordinance and the interpretation of the definition by our code enforcement officer. So in our land use ordinance, it says, "Animal husbandry is the production of domestic animals or livestock in all phases of breeding, feeding, and management." And what I have is a, a budding neighbor who has pigs, like, my neighbors have told me there's five. I saw three out there today, but I didn't really, I didn't get onto his property to look. So they are big pigs in a pen. I have photos that is filled with manure. The pigs, they're so, the pigs are disgusted by the amount of manure that's in this pen and that, that they're like, kind of all piled up in one little corner where there's a platform. But the real problem is that, A, the smell is interfering with our right to enjoy our home property. The smell is permeating. I don't know if you got a chance to come by, but these pigs are direct, they're five feet from our boundary line, from our back boundary line. And so it's really, it's just, it's just disturbing. You can't, my neighbors can't open their windows in their houses because the pig smell is permeating. I contacted the code enforcement, and he said that he interpreted production differently in the land use ordinance and doesn't see the pigs as, you know, as a problem in the R1 zone. And so I think that we have an opportunity to clarify the definitions. I think animal husbandry could have more clarification. There are other definitions that I've read that are available. I think we should, we have the opportunity to define domestic animals. Domestic animals are generally spade or neuter. They're housed inside a home or inside a barn or enclosure, appropriate enclosure. I think we have the opportunity to define livestock or farm animals and maybe rethink of the R1 zone and how appropriate it is to have these types of animals there. Actually, you guys know me, I don't like to reinvent the wheel. So I did a little research about other towns that have had this problem and made ordinances. And they've made ordinances based on the lot size, minimum space per livestock type animal, setback from property lines for pens and manure, because this is directly on the property line, which seems, even in the agriculture zone, I don't think you can have manure piles directly on the, directly on the property line. One issue that I, that I'm finding also is that we have delineated wetlands in our, in our, on our property, and there's 100-foot setback in the agriculture zone. There's 100-foot setback from wetlands for any manure. There's nothing defined in the R1 zone, and this is within 100 feet of wetlands. This is, like, I don't even think you could, anywhere on that property is within 100 feet of delineated wetlands on a survey. You could, we could set rules about the maximum number of livestock per acre, structural design requirements for any enclosures that they may have. But really, the, the comp plan states that the R1 zone is a growth area. It's not rural. We have a rural residential area that's appropriate for, you know, agricultural pursuits and livelihoods. And according to the comp plan, that's where this type of livestock animal should go. So I wanted to bring that to you guys because, obviously, it's in my backyard, so it's important to me right now. But I saw an opportunity, I know we love definitions, and I saw an opportunity to be more clear so that maybe the code enforcement officer will have less ability to interpret it to his, to his interpretation, and it's more black and white. So, so we're clear about what we want in our R1 zone, which is our downtown area.
I remember many years ago, we actually came up with the definition. I remember the word production and how that came. And I think we're the ones that actually worded that.
You know what, Paul? Out back, right now.
I would agree with you. At this point in time, it may make sense to revisit this because, you know, we have many more wonderful definitions that can be used.
Yeah.
And I think the word production, I think, was, was put on that because if you're producing, like, if, you can have a pet chicken.
Yeah.
Or a pet pig.
Yeah.
I mean, my son is a pet pig.
Oh, Alex and I talked about this earlier in the week.
But when you have three pigs, I mean, the production would be if you slaughtered the pigs and you're producing meat.
Right.
You're actually, it's a commercial type thing. It's not a pet.
Yeah.
And I think we were trying to distinguish between a pet and production of meat or, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, I have photos of how these animals are kept. They're not pets.
Is there anything, like, when it refers to production, are we talking, like, production, like breeding production?
It literally only says production.
So there's nothing about, like, breeding and reproducing and...
Well, we, we probably felt it was implied that it's, you know...
That's part of the production.
So what is the code enforcement officer's definition of production, then?
There may be another way to approach this.
Yeah.
And if you remember several years ago, the question about people leaving garbage on their lots and letting grass grow 14 feet tall. If we approach this just as a thought.
Yeah.
Because it may be worse than the approach you're taking. This, you, what you're really describing is a nuisance.
Absolutely.
And maybe we ought to revisit what the ordinance says about nuisances.[1782.04]
And the reason I, I would prefer doing that is, you know, we're gonna have other things that are gonna come up besides pigs.
Yeah.
They're gonna, I'm, I'm assuming there's gonna be questions about marijuana growing in people's homes, that somebody may do it, you know, there's always the, the music is too loud.
We don't have any, we don't have any rules about that either. I found that out too recently.
My general approach is, I mean, unless it's not possible to make this clear enough to solve the problem.
Right.
Then I would prefer to approach this as a nuisance and good neighbor sort of issue.
Yeah.
Than going item by item by item.
Right.
Because I don't know how large a pen should be for pigs.
Well, I mean, I, I think it's, to me, it's obvious, but maybe it's not, that if you're on a three-quarter acre land in Town Burwick on Terrace Drive, that maybe five pigs in your backyard is excessive.
You have a good point.
Amongst the wetlands, by the way.
Well, that's the, that's another, the bigger problem, I think.
Yes, somewhere is approaching.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's, it's disgusting. I mean, but it is, it is a nuisance in that it's interfering with our right to enjoy our own land.
I just add one thing, like, animal complaints have been like the number one complaint in the past month. We had complaints about chickens, pigs, rats.
Oh, we have rat, well, the rats came after the pigs came. I mean, we have rats all over, all over down there now because of the.
Is that a production of rats?
Well, according to code enforcement, rats are a domesticated animal, so that is.
Where does he live?
So anyway, I mean.
Pigs are not a domesticated.
So I've read, so I.
Well, now somebody has kids who's raising rats.
I did write something down.
They're wild creatures, for goodness sakes.
I did write something down that came out of, I believe it was Cleveland, Ohio, and I thought this was really succinct, and this is just food, just food to marinate on, new business. And they wrote, "No goats, pigs, sheep, or similar animals allowed on lots less than blah blah square feet in residential areas." Even on lots over, whatever that square footage is, I think they had twenty thousand square feet in their ordinance. Only two of such animals are allowed. Stables, run-ins, pens have a forty foot setback from the street and property lines and a hundred foot setback from any house on any adjoining property. And then they also have complaint procedure requirements, so if there is a complaint, there is a procedure in place in which that complaint is heard.
Part of a land use ordinance?
That's in their land use ordinance, yeah, it's a separate section.
Usually that's an enforcement type thing.
It is a separate section in their land use ordinance because it became a problem with this, the new term is urban farming. And I, and I think that with the rural character of Burwick that we so love and, and want to keep as per our comp plan, urban farming becomes more, you know, more popular, but we just need to keep in mind, because really, on Dobson where, where you might live, you know, your next door neighbor could literally have a pen with five pigs in your backyard and there's.
Well, in our bylaws, we can't even have chickens.
Oh, well, that's good.
The homeowners association, which I'm not too happy about.
Well, your, your rear abutter then could do it. And, and it's, it just, it just seems inappropriate for the, for the character of the R1, of the R1 zone, that's all.
Yeah, this is something that we could definitely look into.
Thank you.
I think.
Yeah, I like Niall's idea of approaching it from the nuisance, because that's really what it is. A lot of things could be a nuisance.
I don't worry, we can't look at that.
But maybe nuisances should have long setbacks, setbacks.
The proximity to the wetlands too is.
Well, that, I don't even know.
How can we hold a farmer accountable for how close he is to a wetland?
I don't even know how to go about that.
Not hold somebody that's in, you know, closer in town.
Usually you'd have to have a hold, hold area for the water or the waste.
And in fact, we, there is stuff for horses in our ordinance that control horses.
That's the thing is that, there are, there are things in our ordinance for the agriculture zone.
A lot of people want it, like to have a pet horse, you know, and it's fine, should be fine.
Hold on, here's.
So while Nicole.
And that's right on my, that's me on my property line.
I don't show this to Sean. I don't see any pigs.
All I see when I look at pigs is bacon.
No, keep scrolling. Keep scrolling through.
He changed the mics out on me. So one of the things, I'm trying to look for it quickly here.
They're piled in there, because they won't even wanna go out there.
The city of Auburn has a very strong agricultural resource protections zone. And they have a set of standards, and I'm trying to find the definition section of the ordinance. They have standards that say that you have to have so much land per animal unit for num- different types of animals.
Does that make sense?
I wanna see if I can find the definitions of that, excuse me, because it lays out, for example, the one that clearly comes to mind is you talk about, and they, those definite, those standards come from the state department of agriculture. The state has a certain standard.
They have the oral guidelines.
Absolutely. And the one that always stands out to me, simply because it's one and a half horses per cleared acre of land.
That's one big one and one small one.
Exactly. So it's, it's one and a half units per cleared acre of land. But there are, there are state standards, and I know the city of Auburn has incorporated those in their zoning ordinance. So that's certainly one way to look at it. The other issue, the other way to look at it was, I quickly was looking, for example, at your definition of agriculture, which kind of seems to fit what he's doing. And I asked James, at least, you know, from a quick thought process, are there any farms or agricultural uses in the R1 zone? And I don't think there are, so maybe.
Well, Dee Dee's where the.
The last one, we just.
The last one is.
We're working on the last one.
Yeah.
So, so maybe what we do is we alter the table of uses and take agriculture out as a permitted use in the R1 zone.
What's, what is agriculture? Does it include animal husbandry?
What it includes is agriculture shall mean the cultivation of soil, producing or raising of crops, including garden or commercial operation. More specifically, the term shall include the production, keeping, or main, maintenance, or sale or lease of plants or animals. So it says the keeping or maintenance or sale or lease of plants or animals, including but not limited to forage and sod, crops, grains, seed crops, dairy animals and dairy products, poultry, poultry products, livestock, fruits and vegetables, and ornamental and greenhouse products. The term shall also include greenhouses, nurseries, versions thereof for those two terms. When used alone, shall refer specifically to a place where flowers, plants, shrubs, or trees are grown, grown for sale. Agriculture does not include forest management or timber harvesting.
Just add marijuana and pigs in there.
That's what we have in our ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, that's our definition of agriculture.
From the state.
So clearly, we're trying to exempt people who keep animals as pets. And the question is if we want to change that, there are a lot of issues.
I'm close.
Yeah.
I'm close.
Well, that's why I thought of.
No, man, I think your approach makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like the nuisance approach just because it deals with more issues.
Right, right.
I, I don't see why we can't do both. I mean, it's probably quicker, you know, we can do in the short term, let's come up with some standards for certain kinds of animals. But I still think long-term, we need to look at the whole question of nuisances.
I agree, because I had called.
I mean, this comes up from time to time.
Yeah.
And is that a separate ordinance, like a noise ordinance for a second?
Yeah, because we don't have a noise ordinance.
Or is it part of a land use?
I mean, we, we've had it from time to time, you know, businesses that are too loud, if you remember, we had one several years ago. You know, in some ways, the problem here tonight, you could look at it as a nuisance. I, I just think it's time we sort of took a look at it.
There's many things that we need to look at, in fact.
We need.
Just color coding them as we speak.
James has looked at it sixty hours a week, James.
But I appreciate you, you taking, taking a look at it and just seeing if there could be clarification on it, it just.
I mean, what's happening is wrong and we need to figure out a way to stop it from happening.
Yeah.
So, excuse me, here we go. Farm animal means any parcel of land that contains at least the following land area used for the keeping of horses, mules, cows, goats, sheeps, hogs, and similar sized animals for the domestic use of the residents of the lot, provided the adequate land areas provided for each animal unit, excluding water bodies of one quarter acre surface area or larger. That would include wetlands. I'll just cut to the chase. Swine, two animal units per acre of cleared land.
Of cleared land, so that would, you'd take the house, would you take the house off of that? I mean, if the house is on the lot.
If it's part of the cleared land, then that would be included in that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And that's in a residential zone?
That's, that is just the definition of a farm animal, which includes domesticated.
Interesting.
Yeah. Animal, size animals for the domestic use of the residents.
I mean, a lot of this really comes down to trying to be a good neighbor.
Hmm.
And, you know, if you're, well, we have two cases tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they, we're not an enforcement agency.
No, no, we're definitely not. It's just that our enforcement is code enforcement and if he's wishy-washy about what to enforce or if it's not clear, I mean, it just seems like some of these things need to be, need just to be more clear.
Clear, yeah.
Or, or leave it if that's what we want in the town, but I looked at the comp plan and that's not what the comp plan says, so.
But you, you don't wanna, assuming you have the right place for it, I don't wanna stop people from having, you know, some chickens or even a pig.
I think we said you could have chickens in the R1 neighborhood.
If they're domestic, yeah.
Change that.
Yeah.
But, but clearly from the photos, this is not that situation. This is different.
Yeah.
Next up is.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Town Planner, you're up.
Yes. Well, James and I were talking earlier and certainly it's on the agenda tonight. I felt it was very important that in light of the future activities that could be occurring over across the way, that we really need to get cracking on trying to come up with some design guidelines, or at least you folks giving me some ideas and thoughts to put together of some design guidelines for you. And so I've got the presentation, our presentations of those other guidelines that have been drafted for other communities to take a quick look at and get you folks to give me some thoughts and ideas, and I, James and I spoke earlier and actually came up with a couple of thoughts and ideas ourself. So with that, if you wanna maybe move over here, we can put the screen down and do the presentation.
There you go.
I need your password, James.
It's Paul the Bear is hot.
It's just, it's just my wallpaper just popped. Alright.
Well, they give us the popcorn.
Okay, so where are we? I heard he doesn't mean Abe Lincoln. Oh, you know what, we're not set up to the screen. Oh, that's it, we have to. You need to turn it on. No, we're good. We're plugged in.
It's plugged in.
I didn't know it was slow. There we go. Okay, thank you. Alright. So this is, this is Kittery. Kittery's had, probably had the first design guidelines in the state, so they've been around for a while. They've been pretty tried and true since most of the projects down that way have had to adhere to their guidelines. But they have, you know, a lighting section, and I won't spend a lot of time on each one of these, but kinda give you a flavor. What they've done is put in what their objectives are, and this is for every section of their stuff, but what the objectives are and then what their goals are to achieve through their lighting and through other things, but then they'll have pictures. Everybody loves pictures. Uh-oh. The computer's going crazy here too.
Huh.
There we go. It's back. What's going on here? Well, that's weird, because it's up on the screen here.
Looks like it made it a different screen.
That's your.
Yeah, I just decided to make it two different screens.
Huh.
I don't know why, but it did.
Alright, so let's try that. Well, now I can't see it here. No, you're just gonna have to use that as a screen. Uh, what am I doing?
Your, your mouse is just on the.
Yeah, and it's not really going. Okay, so. They're showing, they're showing pictures of the types of lighting that they would prefer to see. They're not gonna show you bad lighting.
Oh, God.
This does not work well, James. I guess I should have brought my computer. Again, what this is doing is talking about lighting, so they're showing you various lighting poles and what they're trying to achieve with those lighting poles. After our lighting, energy, why is that continuing to increase?
Over here?
Yeah.
Thanks. Driveway lighting, signage lighting, outdoor sales and service type of lighting. That's what we need in our land use ordinance, a picture of Walmart. We'll see if we get that.
We'll be reading about that.
Might get some calls on that one. So, so now, now in that chapter, they get to the sections of bad lighting, you know, really tall lights in parking areas, which you don't want. And everybody says, well, we need, we need thirty-foot poles for safety, but, you know, and what it does is it gives them an easier spread of canopy of lighting. So if you shrink the pole to twenty feet, they need, they feel they need more lights in order to achieve the same objective of lighting. A lot of it just comes down to what a certain development wants for lighting standards. But with the newer lighting today, it's much more efficient. The LED lighting is very bright and you can go with shorter poles and really, really bright, secure, safety lighting in parking lots. But there was also the, they, some places tried to do that years ago, as you can see, those are probably like cutoff lights, but what they do is they pivot them and they put them at angles so that they're spraying light out at an angle rather than straight up and down. That's something you. These are, these are examples of lights we don't want. That's right. Bad lighting. Bad lighting.
Bad.
Bad lighting. Pedestrian spaces, you know, they kinda outline what good spaces are and bad spaces are. Again, they talk about their design guidelines and what they're trying to achieve. You know, you like the stuff on the right or on the left, and in those pictures, again, this does not. Oh!
Sorry, dude.
I'm bringing my computer next time. I'm gonna go back to that. So they're showing, you know, lots of landscaping, everything at, at a pedestrian scale, sidewalks that are decorative in, in design. So how do we deal with bad lighting that's already in place or can we just not? BB guns.
Exactly what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I mean, the, the only way you can deal with.
To knock them off.
The only way you can really deal with any of that stuff is if there is a redevelopment proposed on the site or anything that, that they wanna do. If someone comes forward and says, I wanna do a ten thousand square foot expansion, you know, they got a big site. It opens the door up for the board to review every aspect of that project. But you can't just say, you got bad lighting, we want you to change it. But if they come in front of you and they wanna do something on the site, then it opens the whole objective up.
And we're hoping that happens right across the road.
Well, I think you're, I think you're in a, in what I would consider a position across the road where anything and everything is gonna come here and you'll have an opportunity to. The lighting that we put on. I feel on the fence and Matthews. Put that lighting on the side of the hills.
Oh, my gosh.
That's not good.
Go look at it. Well, take a look at it. Plug it right back in. On your way out of here.
It's on the gas station side.
Side facing the gas station, yeah. They put like three or four wall pack. Again, you can, you know, when that, when that comes up for, when that comes up for review, you certainly have the opportunity to, to discuss that. And again, conditions of approval. You can require the developer to do anything within reason, of course, but if it means changing lighting or eliminating certain lighting, that's all fair game.
Is this, in Kittery, is this all vetted down at their land use zoning ordinance?
It's actually a separate document, but there is a piece in their land use ordinance.
Reference?
Yes. This document.
Make it easy to change then.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, this, what, what I would propose here would be probably not as, as detailed as, as Kittery because that's like a seventy or eighty. because that's like a seventy or eighty-page document. But it would be a separate document and it would be guidelines, so it would not need to be adopted as an ordinance.
It does not say shall, it said may.
Correct. It's, it's a guide for you folks and for the developer to use and when the project comes in front of you, you know, you're saying, well, this is what we're really trying to achieve. So, you know, that's.
And, and the form-based code could refer to this as well, you know, that.
I, I think it does. I think it kind of already does.
Yeah.
I guess we've lost our, have we lost our?
No, it's back to like, you're on your, you can control, you can look on your screen now.
You should get the Mac.
Doesn't work in here. It's Johnson, you know.
Lady Jane?
Yes.
Can we put into the ordinance itself?
Yep.
The objectives and the, what was the other, and goals? But, but put then the design guidelines as a, as we'd like you to do this, rather than in the ordinance as we must do this.
Well, that's a great question.
I'm not sure how we can review it if we don't have the goals.
Nope, that's a great question. Well, you, you can review it because, trying to find six point four. One of the things James and I was talking about today, that's why, that was the other reason I said, well, we better get cracking on this, is because six point four, which is your design standards or, or your, your form-based code talks about utilizing your design standards, which you don't have any right.
Which is, I think, how this came up in the first.
Correct, correct. Trying to think of where that wording was, but it is in here and it directs you to use your design.
Yes.
Main Street Design Standards.
But, but if we put the goals and objectives into the.
Build, building standards and features.
Control of what happens.
Well, you'll have control.
Check this sentence.
Well, but if it's, if it's all in the we'd like you to do this.
No, you can condition them on doing that.
Even if it's not in the ordinance?
Yes, absolutely.
It's, it says shall be found consistent.
So, building design and construction shall meet all current energy. Building materials including siding and trim shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board and shall be found consistent with the design guidelines as adopted by the town.
Does that kind of imply that it is a reference?
The guidelines will be adopted by the town.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
But it says that the guidelines would not be adopted by the town.
No, they would not be in ordinance. You can adopt them as a document for your use.
But the town, the legislative body will not vote on it.
No, they don't have to.
Then it can be changed separately on its own?
Yeah.
And the, and the tie is just the reference from the land use ordinance.
Correct.
But then don't we get into the same bind we're in now with subdivision regs? I'm not really quite sure whether they're enforceable or not.
Subdivision regs are absolutely enforceable. State law.
Well, but we've been told a number of times that it would be better if we had them
Adopted by.
Adopted by the town so that they're more like an ordinance than they are.
Well, I would concur with that. They should be adopted by the town, but they are also state law. Are you gonna be codified?
Yeah.
So now, now after this year, the time that we wanna change the subdivision regulations, it has to go in the votes.
Your screen go to sleep or?
I don't know. This can be. So.
We're making up it.
What's your password, James?
Password.
Palmoberry hot.
John, password.
Password is bring back John.
John is my hero. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to kinda screen through this stuff because there's a lot and, and it just, I just wanna get some ideas to you folks, but this is on the Town of Hollis, New Hampshire. They've had theirs adopted for quite a while as well. They actually have an, an area, theirs is very heavy in narrative and I don't think we wanna do that. But it shows various, don't do that to me!
That's good.
Don't confuse them.
This is the least, least favorite, if you will, of any of the documents that I've provided, but I wanted you to see that, you know, even here, they're showing examples of good versus bad type of development and what you're trying to achieve. I wouldn't hold up Hollis as a, as a model to use, but it, it is one that has been adopted. Wyndham, New Hampshire, for their village district, as you can see, as well as other districts, but again, this is somewhat heavy in narrative.
We like pictures.
No pictures.
So, you know, pedestrian sidewalks in parking lots, they require pedestrian access in parking lots so that you don't get out of your car and you're walking down the, you know, median strips, median aisles. They actually become walk areas.
That's interesting.
So that people aren't conflicted with vehicles. Again, pedestrian walkways with development areas, you can see on the right, very wide sidewalks, lots of landscaping, making them very comfortable and pedestrian-friendly. Pedestrian areas shown on the left where there's seating available for dining and whatnot. Even stormwater management. You can see the island in the middle there. Let's see if I have my little arrow, but. That, that is actually a stormwater pond. Low-impact, low-impact development in there. So everything sheet flows to that area from the parking lot and there's median, media in there that absorbs the water so it doesn't pond. And there's vegetation that's very water-friendly in there. So it becomes a heavy landscaped area and it's a very heavily landscaped area within your parking lot.
But, but that makes it exclusive, mutually exclusive with the walking space.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
But can you incorporate?
I'm, I'm sure you could. You could, you could, you could request them to incorporate LID parking, LID standards in their parking lot for stormwater and accommodate walk areas within that area.
That would, like in the big, people are complaining about across the street, you know, having sixty-pound parking lots. But that could, if you have this little greenspace that would separate the roads and parking, it really solves the issue pretty easily.
Again, here's some additional pictures of how they did it. You can see, you know, a slight grade that gets the water into that area and it's dropped down. Here's another, you know, these are rain gardens adjacent to parking areas. So there's ways of designing your stormwater to, to do that. That one's not as. Architecture, again, you know, depending on the town and where you're located, they're trying to achieve various types of, of architecture compatibility. You can see these are, these are new developments. There's another one of those McDonald's, like the Freeport one.
That we love so much.
That we love so much. I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's another one.
Meaning we should go there.
You know, they talk about scale and massing. Really what they're trying to achieve is, is architecture with New England, New England-style design.
Is that an old barn, do you know?
That is a new barn.
That's a brand new.
Well, I think that that's gonna be the number one important thing for us is the architectural design sticking, staying with the New England, classic New England. How we define that, I don't know. I don't.
That's.
There's a lot of renderings that we saw of potentials that could go in there that look like that. And that is not what, what.
Yeah, like which one? The bottom?
Downtown. So, so it looks like Silicon Valley. So James and I talked a little bit about that today. Well, we were only together for an hour or so. So, so one of the ideas that I'll throw out at you that we could build in is because you do have major buildings over there with flat roofs. So you give the applicant the option, you require, you require. You state that you want to see pitch roofs to bring the buildings closer to a New England style and they wouldn't just be these big, long pitched roofs. They can, you know, build in angles and parapets and whatnot. Or if you're not gonna do that and you want a flat roof, then you require that X percent of the roof be dedicated to solar panels for energy efficiency and to green roofs.
Green roofs.
So you have a choice, you know? You can either have solar and green or you can put on a pitch roof to try to bring it into compliance with New England style.
Even with an existing building or any of their.
That's what I was wondering.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
About our existing buildings that are already are downtown right now across the street. I think all of them except for one have just a flat roof, so it's only if they come in with a new use.
Okay, if they come with the planning board, you can certainly request that. I like that. Okay, all right. My memory bank?
Uh-oh.
Are we still on the channel?
Twenty-two.
Again, what they're trying to show there is what, you know, I think Mike Lassell already talked with you folks about for across the, across the way and that's just amassing and breaking up of buildings. I really don't wanna get back into that. You've got your performance base, your form-based code, so. Just looking, you know, they talk about mechanical equipment. That's an interesting one, trying to, oops. Trying to hide mechanical equipment so that it's not, you know, visible. If it's not, if, if you're putting it rooftop, you can create faux parapets so that the mechanical is hidden. If they're going on the ground, you can require screening so that they're located in areas that are heavily screened and still accessible for, for whatever kind of equipment maintenance they need to do. We won't get into that. That's all their landscaping requirements for vegetation. And that's it. So let me close that one out.
So how much work is it to come up with something a little smaller than what we're looking at here, but, you know, give us the, the little bit of ideas so when we're reviewing something, we have something to refer to.
Won't take long. Because what I would do, I mean, there's, there's no secret to it. Depending on the ideas that we talk about and what we have, I'm gonna take some of this stuff and I would cut and paste it into a document. I'd add some narrative like the, the whole discussion about the green roofs and, you know, maybe a couple of weeks.
And then what would you call that? That would be our design standard.
Design, design guidelines.
Guidelines.
Yes, yes.
Guidelines.
That way they're not in ordinance, they don't have to be adopted, they're.
But then you have to be, you have to find, you, you have the ability to see their plan and deem it consistent with your design that they have.
Does it match or doesn't it not?
That's right.
So that would be a vote we would take like.
Yep.
And is there a public hearing on that as well?
Oh, of course.
So the, so the public would be able to weigh in on this if, if they thought it matched. Perfect. Just wanted to clarify that.
Process. Yep.
Not that they can hear us, but if they can.
So this is Hamilton, Massachusetts. I mean, again, you know, you're gonna find a common theme here that all of these New England towns that have adopted this stuff are, it's all very similar. Everybody's trying to achieve the same kind of, yeah, look and feel of making sure that it fits in with the, with the, the town. You know, here they talk about, you know, inappropriate designless scales, yeah, so.
And that's a pitched roof.
That's right, but it's a long pitched roof.
Those gables always help.
That's right, absolutely. Break it up.
Break it up.
Yep, yep. Again, here, you know, you've got a New England-style retail facility.
That looks like the brew pub.
Yep, they talk about.
Uh-oh.
Inappropriate.
Well, that's still a work in progress over there.
Yeah, we're on it today. Yeah, those guys are moving too right now. Oh, they're making beer. They're just not, they're just breaking it.
No wonder it's taking so long.
This one gets into materials. This, this gets into materials and color a little bit. Personally, I'd stay away from coloring because that's really what's, what I like for color. You may not like for color. I may like a mustard yellow and you may like a, you know, lavender purple, so I, I just don't.
Oh, you know what? The city of Dover's going through something right now with that ugly building where St. Charles Church used to be. Because there was, when they initially presented the plans, it was supposed to be more of a brick color, but this is bright red. And the city planner was like, well, there's nothing we can do about it.
It'll fade in fifteen years.
Yeah.
Material's a different thing, you know, do you want clabboard? Do you want stone? Do you want brick? For your sidewalks or your, for your building facades. Certainly we can try to, to do something with that, but I just, again, it gets into.
Can you require bricks on sidewalks?
Absolutely, yeah.
Cause that's just pricey, isn't it?
It's bumpy too.
Good point.
We'd have to be, we'd have to include a detail on how we want it.
Yeah, and the Harry Bow.
Harry Bow, yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Self-grading.
That, you know, the, the.
We do a lot of, you and H, if you put brick in, they, on bigger sidewalks, they put asphalt underneath.
Right, exactly. Stops the heaving.
Put the brick on asphalt.
Yeah.
And then with the sand between them.
Seems like a lot of material.
So again, this is, you know, the same, same kinda stuff that you've already seen.
A lot of small pains.
Yeah. So let's see, which one is this?
Meredith.
Yes, thank you. Meredith, New Hampshire. Again, you know, they're talking about, here's what our downtown looks like. We wanna maintain consistent street edge for your parking areas, your sidewalks. Building scale proportions, so there's a, I don't know if that's a bank or a.
Convenience store.
Convenience store, yep, that was built down there. That's what they don't want, you know, this strip mall does not maintain a traditional scale and is not pedestrian-friendly. Roof lines, you know, there you go. Those are great roof lines too. You know, these are new developments. They're not like the barn of the, on right there. That again is a new development. So, I mean, I can, what I can do, massing, they talk about the whole massing thing. What you try to do with that, if you can, is, is break up the massing so that you don't have those long walls. For example, one of the things that, that we talked about earlier was that I did the review for the Hannaford over in North Berwick. If you look at the side of the building that faces Route nine, they originally proposed that just to be a building, you know, a plank facade. I got the planning board to condition them on putting those windows in.
Yeah, those are good.
Those are faux windows.
Yeah, they're fake windows.
They're fake windows. They're just mounted to the building, but they look like windows cause they help break up that mass. I did the same thing on a small project in Auburn that I showed James earlier on a Dunkin' Donuts. The back of the building and the service area, cause, because of the location, was on a main street. And so rather than just having back of shop, they put in, at a request, they put in faux windows. And so it looks like it's part of the shop. And there's no reason why you can't do stuff like that and you can't require stuff like that. You got a building mass right across the street. It's a long, blank, concrete wall. It doesn't have to stay like that in the future, you know, even if it.
Have a roof line.
That's right, roof line and faux windows to break it, break it out. Very possible to do that. Again, a lot of it's just roof, roof line is a big thing. There's some lighting, architectural features and details. You can see the, the type of railings that they put in. You know, flower boxes and then the lighting, loose-neck lighting, and there's not even a sign there. It's just lighting that helps create some character to the building. Again, that's clearly not what you want with mechanical, sticking outside of the building like that. It certainly breaks up the mass, but it doesn't do a very good job architecturally. It certainly breaks up the mass, but it doesn't do a very good job architecturally. Um, um, so that's, that's a not good, um, visual. Now you got your typical Dunkin', um, excuse me, McDonald's.
That's a bad McDonald's.
That's a bad McDonald's.
Aren't all of them that? They, they all taste.
So, I mean, there's, I, I actually developed, um, in, in, um, Waterboro, um, they had a, a project come in, um, I won't mention the, the applicant, but I will tell you they had a, um, yellow and black sign, um, that has become prevalent in Southern Maine. Um, and it was their very basic box and people were, um, very upset about it. Um, and we ended up developing a one-page set of, or I shouldn't say one-page, probably two-page set of design guidelines. It really just talked about amassing, breaking the building up, providing landscaping. Um, it doesn't have to be a hundred-page booklet, it all depends on what we're trying to achieve.
But if you do that, that's not a reference manual, that's embedded, you know, it's a standalone again?
No, theirs is embedded as ordinance. Um, but there is a booklet that we developed that goes along with it, as a design guideline booklet to just gift us people and say, here's what we're trying to achieve. They don't even use it as part of the planning board review, it's just, here, to the applicant, here's what we're trying to achieve.
So if we.
That's a cool idea.
We get into this, would we only apply that to the, um, downtown hallway?
The building too.
Probably, right?
Yeah, yeah.
See how it goes.
Well, there's no point in doing it out on Route nine, you're gonna.
No, but you, you aren't gonna get buildings like on Route four, for example.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if, you know, those are such, those are construction businesses.
I think you just focus on the Village Doble District, then in like five years from now, then you can really focus on RCI to really get it to fine tune where you want. Once this is up and running, then you've already identified that that corridor is like the next stretch for development, but.
Right, yeah.
You see that new property, that, the commercial property that's up for sale now, across the street, where the Red Barn was, the, um, uh, the, the store there, that, what's your name?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, Nick's it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, both of them, they're selling both. I don't know if you're gonna sell them separately or together.
Yeah, commercial.
I saw it, definitely, you know, this stuff could definitely apply to that property.
Yeah, and I think that's part of the Village Doble too.
It is, it even says it on the sign. So anyway, that's just a taste, but I wanted you to see that other towns have developed this type of thing, that, that they're, um, guidelines, they're not necessarily ordinance. Um, what I can do is start pulling something together for you guys to critique and say, we like this, we don't like that.
We are so good at that.
It doesn't happen, have to be like it's a hundred-page.
I also have all the.
Lots of pictures.
All the stuff that was shown today is in this book, if someone wants to take it home.
Someone.
Sidewalks in the one ball.
Everything, yeah, everything was shown today.
There was, there was a, a sidewalk a few months ago, right? About the conditions and everything, so, I mean, that's, that's a start.
So.
How do you want this handled?
That, that's, that's everything that was shown.
I'm gonna slide it out.
This is exactly what.
Yes, just so you can get a, a closer look at. Yeah.
Yeah, I have like twelve pages so far of a sidewalk inventory, inventory and plan.
Well, that's. Mr. Jarrett, anything else? Whose turn is it?
I can't, I, I never.
I, I seconded something last time.
I was looking behind you.
Alternates between me and between Mike.
I will make a motion that we adjourn this evening's planning board meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor? All right. Great.